I really am hoping it's not too long.
Flash back.
I need to verify this. Steve, tonight is...
He gave him the question right.
Tonight is...
I'm telling you, it could be the last one.
Elaborate, elaborate a little bit. What's his last name? I can only hope.
Oh, yes, yes. Keep all documentation. Anything that they can give us over, make copy and tape when you give it. Oh, my. I'm surprised they put a magnet in it.
I stuck it on the back.
Oh.
It mounts to my follow-on.
Yeah. I was just thinking, the magnet doesn't go through and affect the fan?
Well, no, I'm not sure. I have a hard time getting the speakerphone.
Yeah.
Because the body is the speaker.
Right.
So it may be affecting my speakers. I'm changing cases tomorrow.
I'm just confirming that you're playing the game.
It continues to be the case.
We have to go on the schedule for detective sessions. I've been so busy, I haven't had to call you.
But I like it because I'm not around.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah.
I have the dashboard of my SUV. I mean, because I use it when I'm at work.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. The map and everything.
From here.
Yeah.
This is where I was today.
Is there any...
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I'm hoping John Gundy will be there.
Oh, yes.
Scott, who's going to write your proposal for the IT RFP?
I think we're going to copy as closely as we can the Van Deroe one. I already have Lockhart. Lockhart, I mean.
Yeah.
As close as I get to San Antonio.
I found, they did one, and there's one liquid that was pretty comprehensive. But I want to kind of mimic theirs as closely as we can. I had one that staff had done, and it, these were much better and more detailed. One of the things that we need to do, and I may lean on the mayor to help me with this, is like Van Deroe did, take pictures of our various servers and equipment and identify them and call out what kind of phone system they have.
Reviewing it.
Yeah?
I did that for a living.
Oh, yeah.
That'd be great. That'd be great. That's one reason why I included the contract.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, military base.
For ACS, because it was done during Bob Lee's tenure.
Base I was at up in Altus. The gate for the main, there was only one gate to get on the base. Main gate is just a little outside the property line.
Probably not. That'd be too expensive. Because we might as well hire, I mean, that's...
Gets money from the government to cover...
We spend about $100 an year, sign up to justify a position onsite. But within a certain, they should say you need to be able to be here within 45 minutes.
Awesome, military.
I think that's reasonable.
Yep. And of course, you know, all military bases are built on a swamp, so...
Well, I have a friend, he's a retired Green Beret.
Okay.
He's also a survivor in Texas.
Yeah.
I couldn't find that guy till then. The only thing I had was that email.
Same here.
I found his email.
Some of them have been surveyed too.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Who is it?
So he's out there today. I don't know. I'm trying to find him.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they see that's near.
Yeah, he was, yeah. So I'll ask him. I know he's been there because he's done them all.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Go across town to Fort Smith, Camp Olis.
Do you have the presentation dongle thing? So I can do the...
Oh, yeah.
If I use that.
Yeah.
I'm going to use it for the pledges and then...
Okay.
And then...
All right. That works.
Okay, yep. Yep, he's here. Got you.
The pastor is up.
You got another pen in there? Let's start stacking the pens in here for me.
Six years.
We always, we always give the army a whole time because they always seem to get lost. Where, you know, everybody keeps on the air force, but we seem to have nothing to do with that. Yeah, out of, out of the four branches of service.
Hmm?
The army's one that has...
No, hopefully, yeah.
Which you would think they wouldn't because what's good job mainly? They don't want to...
Debbie, all right.
We thought that as part of our thing.
Live stream zone and recording zone.
All right, great. All right, so we're going to open up this meeting at 5:01 PM. Let's start with a roll call.
Sheena Martinez, District One.
Val Carey for District Two.
Herb Dyer, District Five.
And Darren Schroeder, Mayor. Harold is absent today. He's on vacation.
What?
I know. I didn't think he was on vacation. Okay. Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and its republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
We've got Pastor John from Vista Community Church. If you don't mind, please stay standing for the prayer, and we're going to have a moment of silence after the prayer to, to honor the folks that have lost their lives in Uvalde, state.
Father, we, we come with heavy hearts. God, again, again, innocence is taken away from us, Lord, in these young people, God, in this school, Lord, in Robb Elementary School in Uvalde, God. We, it breaks our heart to see this again and again, Lord, and we know it breaks your heart. You said in your word that suffer the children to come to you, for such is the kingdom of God. And so, Lord, we know that young people will come into your presence, Lord. But, God, the families that are left behind, Lord, those that have been wounded and hurt, God, those scars will last a lifetime. God, we pray, we pray for them, God. We pray, Lord, that your mercy would be found in, in, in the comfort that only you can bring, God, to them, that you would meet them, Lord, at this time, as only you can. Oh, Lord, we call on your name. We call on the name of Jesus, the God of all comfort and grace, to meet these family members, those left behind, our first responders in what they saw and heard. Oh, God, have mercy and help us, oh, God, in whatever way possible we can minister to them, that we could help them, that, that those of us that are in contact with folks there, that we would be a source of comfort. God, we ask this all in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you. Please be seated. All right, next item on the agenda is citizens' comments. If anybody would like to speak for citizens' comments, please come up, state your name and your address. And at the end of citizens' comments, we're going to have a short presentation that we accidentally left off, but we'll, we'll talk about that in just a little bit.
Hey, my name is Donna Jacklitz. I live down the street on Fiorella at 1311 in the Holler House. So I have two requests. One, that we, that we install a four-way stop sign at Madrid and Fiorella. The speeding has not slowed. I, I don't see police there to monitor it or even as a visual, and I think at least if we have a, a stop sign there, that might slow the traffic. In addition, we have a lot of walkers, and so, you know, while initially I wanted the speed limit in the, at least the historic area dropped a bit, I understand that's probably not going to happen, but at least a four-way stop sign might slow people down. That's it. Thank you.
Cool. Thanks. And Donna, we're actually going to talk about some of that in the mayor's report. If you want to stick around until after that, you might see some of it. Well, you don't like us a lot, enough to hang around?
If you say yes, it is.
Close.
After waiting.
All right. Is there anybody else that would like to speak for citizens' comments?
Good evening. David Mers, 148 Village Path. I've said it before, but I'll say it again. Five o'clock is still a really hard time for people with jobs to attend, and considering that citizens' comments are the first thing that happens in the meeting, it makes it hard for a lot of people to get on the record with their concerns. And if you'll allow me a second item, right now, citizens are only notified of zoning changes if they own land within 200 feet. Seeing as how a lot of people rent houses or apartments in Casterville, this actually makes a lot of citizens feel kind of blindsided, or like the city is trying to pull a fast one on them when a zoning change happens just outside of reach and they don't hear about it. I recognize that 200 feet is the minimum under Texas law, but maybe we can aspire to do more than the minimum in the future with that sort of notification. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Great. We have anybody else? All right.
Kai?
Yes, please.
A little bit of mea culpa, so I really apologize. There was some back and forth about this. This is the COVID presentation that has been given to parks. I know it's been a lengthy process, and I, I'm the one that messed up and didn't put it on the agenda, so I apologize. But because of that, what you're going to hear is a presentation, just like any other citizen's comments, we really can't debate, deliberate, or respond to them. If this, if there is a need for deliberation, we'll put it on a future agenda. This will act as a presentation piece of what they have to give to us and stuff.
And let me just commend you for your fortitude and tenacity with this. I know you've been through a lot, and this is part of getting things approved in, in city government, so I hope it's been an educational experience because I don't think it's been a pleasant one, but please present what you've got.
Okay, well, I'm Julie Guzman, and I'm doing this project on behalf of Casterville 4-H and...
My name's Tyler Frail, and I'll doing, be doing this as part of my Eagle Scout project for Casterville.
Your last name again?
Frail, F-R-A-I-L.
And before we start, we just want to say that our thoughts and prayers are with the victims of Uvalde.
So our project is going to be a COVID-19 memorial to honor both the healthcare workers, the victims, and both the survivors of COVID-19. It'll go at the library. It'll be a nice place for people to come sit and reflect just on the pandemic and the way that it touched everyone's lives. We feel to be a valuable addition to the community and something that a lot of people will be able to enjoy and use, especially at the library, which is such a calm place.
And initially, our first design was for the park, and then it was for September Square, but I think we decided that the most appropriate spot for the memorial would be at the library.
So the basis of the project will be, I don't know, there was a picture on our presentation. I don't keep that up right now. But there's an existing pathway at the back of the library, and then coming up with that, we would just construct a simple sidewalk. Then it'll open up, it's going to be a circle on the ground, it's going to be made out of concrete, and around the edges, there's going to be benches where people can sit. People will be able to purchase spots on the benches to put flags there on the bottom that they can memorialize either healthcare workers or victims, and that'll also be a main, large source of our donations to fund the project. So funding won't be a great concern. We'll also be setting up a GoFundMe to take care of the funding. But yeah, and then at the center of the circle, there will be a memorial. It'll be kind of a raised plaque that's slanted down, so it'll be a pillar with a slanted part, much like this. That, it'll be a little lower, though, and you can just come up and read it and just kind of sit. It's under, it's in the middle of three big, really tall trees, so there'll be plenty of shade. It'll be a nice, enjoyable space.
And we didn't do anything too crazy just because of maintenance, because originally I think we had some plants and trees in our design, but we just thought the more simple, the better.
Yes, this won't be very low, low maintenance.
Great. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you both very much. Looking forward to seeing you. All right, last chance. Anybody else? Next item we have is the consent agenda. On the consent, consent agenda, we have minutes for May 10th, 2022, regular called council meeting. We have the fuel purchasing contract, the MVIA ISD tower antenna agreement, and the Texas Smart Buy membership program. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
I will second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. All right. Next, we get to swear in, not swear at, Councilman Herb Dyer. Important distinction. All right. Councilman Dyer, you want to come down here? We'll do this right down here. So for those of you who didn't know, Councilman Dyer also took a vacation. Inappropriately, I mean, no, he took a vacation wonderfully and was not here for the swearing in from the electoral election, so we're going to take care of that now. Hello. I thought he was going to get...
There he is.
I know. All right. Raise your hand and repeat after me. I, Herb Dyer.
I, Herb Dyer.
You solemnly swear or affirm?
You solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties?
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of City Council, District Five?
Of City Council, District Five.
For the city of Casterville, the state of Texas?
For the city of Casterville, the state of Texas.
And will, and will to the best of my abilities?
And will to the best of my abilities.
Preserve, protect, defend?
Reserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States?
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state?
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Sign over here. Thank you for serving. You're welcome. Thank you. Congratulations. I'm sorry. All right. So the next item is the mayor's report. It's going to take me just a second to get this started up. We're going to talk about the stormwater drainage public meeting from last week. We're going to talk about some traffic measures. We're going to talk a little bit about a call for volunteers, and then finally, city planning for growth, so ways to protect our heritage and culture. Starting with the stormwater drainage. We had the meeting last week. The engineers came in. I told everybody at the beginning of the meeting, I apologize, I'm going to disappoint you because we're not going to have any solutions right now. It takes a lot of time to put these together, and I'll, I'll talk about the timeline in just a moment. But we wanted to bring people in very early to let them know what was going on through the entire process. So we talked early on about what the engineering study had shown, and they put up some, they had shown the results of their, their LiDAR study and the computational fluid dynamics model of what the flooding was, and then asked people for, to, for input on what they were missing. So anything that we had experienced anecdotally, and they've provided an upload location. We'll have that on the website, hopefully sooner than later, with some of the details that have the maps that show it, and with the areas where people can go in, and we'll have a way to upload photos and videos. I know I have a bunch. Scott has a bunch from the last big flood, and I, I know that we've received some from some citizens, so we walked through that. So the, the goal is do the engineering study, that was the first part of it, discuss with the community, because this is a cooperative process, and we're going to work toward a, and I want to be clear, it's a prioritized and funded project list, and we're keeping it limited to five, five limited and five detailed. We can't do everything, and we can't have the engineers look at everything, we don't have an unlimited supply of money, and we don't have, we, we don't have the, we don't want to wait on getting something done, so we're going to work with the community to identify the highest value projects, work on the funding, and actually get it into the budget. I've said before, if it doesn't exist in the budget, it's not a plan. If it's not funded, if it's not dedicated, it, it's just a dream. So we're going to make sure that we get that in as a plan. So the next steps, we are going to compile the experiential data recorded, like I talked about, the, the evidence that we've captured, video and photo evidence. We're going to refine that prioritized list and discuss with the community. So my timeline didn't show up very well. Basically, May, it's select the projects. June will be the city coordination. In July, we'll do the capital improvement plan, a public meeting, then a draft report in August, and then a final report probably toward October. And then the future planning. So we also need to review the adopted ordinances and criteria for, for construction, for infalots, for new development, to make sure that we're actually capturing what needs to happen, to ensure that the, the development that's crashing at our doorstep doesn't cause flooding issues for other people. And then identify gaps in our policy so that we can address those. So more on that coming up. Please reach out if you have any questions about that. Next item, traffic measures. So earlier this year, we approved the purchase of two of these radar speed carts. You can actually see one, we have it in the back here. I've not taken a look at it personally, but we, we bought two of those so that we can, what we would do before is have an officer sit out for a day at a time, take up the entire day, and watch the traffic. So we got these specifically for, well, for two reasons. One, they tend to have probably three or four weeks of effectiveness. People will see it, and they'll slow down because they'll remember, and then after three or four weeks, they're like, I'm just going to keep on speeding. So what this does is it actually records how many, at what time, at what speed come through, and what, the result of that is, we know when to place officers there, and so I would expect over the course of the next few weeks, few months, you're going to see a lot of blue and red. So this is down Highway 90, it's some interior arterial streets, especially where people are going through. Country Village is a, a big offender. Constantinople is a big offender, and Highway 90, we have, actually, Fiorella here, to Donna's point, is, is a big offender. So I think the first ones, one's going to go out at Country Village. I, I don't know that we're going to get one out by the elementary school. We might wait for that one until the school year starts back up, and then we'll find the, the final placement of the other one. But please keep an eye out for that and keep your speed down because they will be writing tickets. All right, next thing. So that was it, Donna. You can hang out if you like.
Can I ask you a question?
Is that all right?
Yes.
All right.
You're meeting.
Well, I got to make sure that I do, do things right. They slapped my hand.
So do you already have a plan for the exact time that you're going to have each march or each Sunday?
No, we...
So the data collection is going to, is going to be skewed depending on how long you have it out, so is that a plan?
We, we have a tentative plan. My thought is we leave it out probably for a month, like four weeks at a time. It should give us a decent idea of that, but it just kind of depends on what's going on with, with the traffic. If we're able to catch something pretty quickly and we see regular speeding, I think we know about when we can put it out there, and part of that is seeing when the majority of the, the traffic's happening. So this is going to be data analysis by, or...
If I'll speak to that. So the three to four week timeframe really is the time of efficacy, it's not how long you leave it out there. Typically, you'll see one of these radars in place for about a week, maybe two at most, and then you get three to four weeks additional of, of people just kind of learning that habit, and then it'll get moved around. We've got two of them, so we'll be able to move them around, and we're going to probably do it kind of the way we do code enforcement for the most part, which will be complaint based. So people like yourself who come in and say that they're really concerned about Fiorella, I know I've heard, I've been here for a little over a year, and we've heard a number of comments about concerns, especially different times of the day along Fiorella when we've got the dance, I think next to us, active. So we'll be moving it around, but it probably won't be, I wouldn't expect to see it more than two weeks in any location.
And of course, the frustrating part for us is that, I mean, I've lived on that street just two hours down for 30 years, and so it's always been an issue. So welcome to the city, but it's always been an issue.
And honestly, the red and blue lights are going to be the most effective thing. People getting tickets, it will, I, I don't have a problem with having a reputation for being the place you just shouldn't speed through. Cool.
If you like Ocala, Florida, you do one mile over the speed limit, you get a ticket.
It's like Casterville was years past.
That's how Ocala's been the entire time it's existed.
So the next thing is, it's a call for volunteers. This is kind of a, it's kind of, I guess, congratulations, a thank you for all of the volunteers that we have. We have so many volunteers that do so many things so often. I see a lot of the faces sitting in here that really, they volunteer for different boards and commissions, they volunteer for different workdays. Arnie volunteers for absolutely everything, and the city couldn't run without him. I only say that half tongue and cheap. So I, I wanted to, you know, I, I was talking to County Judge-elect Keith Lutz, and, and we were talking about the importance of community, and how do you do that? And a, a great way to do that is through volunteerism. If you think about how do we get together, it's through volunteering. How do we get things done? It's through volunteering. It's a great way to come together, and it's a great way to maintain that community spirit through the different events that we have, through the different causes that we have. It, I really believe that it's the most important activity to promote community. We do need the next generation of volunteers. We've got a lot of people that have historically volunteered over and over and over and over for many, many years, and we really need to be looking for, who is the next volunteer, generation of volunteers that can step up and, and pick up that mantle and find others who have needs? So I'll, I'll walk through some of these. These are our open boards and commissions. You can find this on the website, what boards and commissions are open. If you Google, what is it? Casterville, Texas Boards and Commissions, you'll see every one of them with the openings that are on there. So please find a, a place where you've got passion and, and do step up to that. We also have the Friends of the Regional Park, Friends of the Landmark Inn, Friends of the Library. We have conservation societies, several of those. There are all kinds of areas that you can get engaged and involved, and if you, if you have questions about where you can do that, give your council person a call, give me a call, and we'll, we'll find a way to get you plugged in. The citywide cleanup. So I've got to say, this is something that, I believe it was initiated by, by Kearl, what was it? A year, last year?
Yeah.
Last year, yeah. We, so it was right after, that's right, it was right after we had the big storm, and we had all of the branches that were down, and we had an issue with getting everything picked up. And so, so she would go out and say, I'm going to have to write you a citation, or we can help you out. And that's the thing I, I like, I do believe that citations need to be written. I do believe that we need to enforce our codes, but I also believe, I, I believe that we should find others in need who can't either physically or financially take care of some of the things that they need, and find volunteers to do that. I know that several of the council people up here have volunteered for that. There have been people, not just citizens, but people from outside of Casterville in the community that have stepped up for that. It's a great way to help other people out, it's a great way to find people in need, and we're doing that. We, we, actually, and our waste management has volunteered. We had an issue where we had a pretty decent sized structure that we couldn't figure out what to do with all the material, and Waste Management, to their credit, there, there are vendors for the, the trash services. They said, we'll bring you a roll-off, and that'll be our donation. They also offered to, to physically volunteer on occasion as well. It just, it's great to see people that are looking out for that kind of thing. And the Casterville Cares, this is a concept that I was talking with, with Keith Lutz about, and that is, he had, and I think that, actually, Scott came up with the name. Medina Cares did the, the fundraiser for the victims of the fires. So we're talking about maybe putting together something where we've got a Medina Cares and a Casterville Cares and a Divine Cares and a Lacoste Cares, so that we have these organizations that are looking out for people in need. I know that a lot of the churches have stepped up. I, I'm not going to name them off because pretty much all of them have reached out and I'm not going to name them off because pretty much all of them have reached out and had workdays, they've volunteered for things, they've gotten together as groups and coordinated with the city. Sometimes they just go off and do it on their own. I know one of them, once a year, they have their service as a part of the service, so it's a service service. So it's really good to see people coming together and we'd like to find a way to coordinate that into some more unified efforts. We don't have a ton of staff to do that, so we're going to have to figure out how that works. But I wanted to plant a bug and get you thinking about that. The last thing is, so right now, the picture that you see on your right, that is downtown historic Castroville. And the terrible blight on it, it's got the Highway 90 that's just cut right through it. But if you look at, it's open and it's got mixed use, it's got some business, some civic, some residential, lots of open.